Good evening and welcome to the Village Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand and ten. I'd like to ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory is absent. Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebenow?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Police Chief Mulher?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Media Relations Coordinator McIntyre?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker?
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice pro. First item this evening of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held September thirtieth and board meeting held October fourth, two thousand and ten. Any corrections to be reported? Hearing none. Moving right along. Open forum. We have one request this evening from Glenn Liljberg, a name familiar to all of us. Six twenty-one Newport. Mr. Liljberg.
Hello. How are you doing? Well, I'm Glenn Liljberg. I'm the current president of the Westmont Rotary Club, and I just wanted to start promoting an event that we're going to have on November thirteenth at the high school. It will be starting at seven o'clock PM. It is called All Creatures Great and Small. It's going to be a family cabaret show that will start off with the high school kids doing a performance from seven to seven thirty, and then the main show will be from seven thirty till about ten o'clock. And it's going to be a really good community event. All the money raised for the event goes back to local charities for the village and also for scholarships that we award at the end of the school year to the high school kids who attend the different schools within Westmont. So I just want to invite everyone out again November thirteenth. They could order tickets starting Saturday off of our website at westmontrotaryclub.org, or they could just contact if they know a Rotarian in the group in the community. They could contact them, but the best place is going to be westmontrotaryclub.org. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. That's all we have under open forum. Mayor reports. I have nothing at this time. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just want to remind anybody out collecting money in the street to please be careful. After being hit by a car myself doing this, you just have to be -- Fred was with me. You just -- it was the typical thing that Police Chief Mulher has warned us about, the right-hand turner, turning on red. And she was looking left, and I was right in front of her car, and I thought, oh, she's not going to see me. And she didn't. Fortunately, I did not get hurt at all. I did not go down. But just if you're out there collecting for any organization, please be careful because it can happen really fast. So that's all. I just wanted to remind people to be careful.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Manager Searle?
Thank you. Several things, actually, and several things to consider possibly adding to the agenda for Monday. First, I wanted to ask for an executive session personnel. The first item potentially to add to the agenda is the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference had an auction scheduled originally for September twenty-fifth. The board had passed an ordinance for that particular date. The date actually got changed November thirteenth, and in talking to the village attorney, we need to amend the ordinance or pass a new ordinance with the date. So I'd like to add that to the agenda for Monday to make that change. The next thing is I passed out an agreement with Elmhurst Memorial Hospital. It's our employee assistance program provider. We've had them for a number of years. They have asked us to approve a new agreement. There is no change in the agreement in terms of dollars. There were some details in the hours and the services that they provide, but not substantively that have changed, that they've asked us to consider approving. And in order for me to sign that, I need the board's approval to do that. And I talked to village attorney earlier this afternoon. He said he could have it reviewed before Monday night. And we also, after the agenda was prepared, we received a couple of requests for charity fundraisers. One from the Westmont Wildcat Football and Cheer Group and another one from Disabled American Veterans. I passed out a copy of the letters from both of those groups. These are both fundraising events that the board has considered and approved in the past, and I'd like to add that to the agenda for Monday as well.
Got requests for an executive session?
Yeah.
On there also?
Yes. Okay. The next, actually, the last item to add to the agenda was a request need to appoint me as the acting or temporary treasurer. There are some ministerial functions that have to be done with that that we need to execute, so I would ask if we could add that to the agenda for Monday night as well. And then the last thing I had was to mention that on Monday night, we have scheduled the next department presentation. It's going to be Economic Development, so I wanted to sort of promote that. And then related to that, our Economic Development Director wanted to address the board regarding a memo that was passed out to you, and I'll let him explain the details of that.
Okay. Thank you, your honor, members of the village board. We have before you a memo that staff has prepared in concert with the village attorney. As you may recall, at our last set of meetings before you on the business agenda were three very complex and complicated situations that dealt all with certain types of special use permits and occupancy requests for legal non-conforming use businesses. There were some very unique circumstances, and as luck would have it, all of these items came to you on the same agenda. Many of these involved a situation where staff decided after consulting with legal counsel that these businesses could operate on a temporary basis so long as they were in process of pursuing their legal applications and requirements through the approved process. This was kind of an unusual situation, and we just want to make sure that we're on the right page in terms of the board's philosophy and intentions. So what we'd like to ask is not that we take up a lot of time of the valuable board's time tonight, but just ask you to read through that memo, make sure that what we have done meets with your expectations and your wishes. If this does not meet with your expectations and wishes, we would certainly be receptive to direction in another area, in another way, when similar situations like this come before us in the future. So just want to make sure that we're implementing the board's desires here, so please take some time to review that and let us know what your thoughts are on those three matters. Thank you very much.
And Fred, if I could clarify, the standard practice is if a business starts up that's not authorized by special use permit or otherwise, the village staff shuts them down and either makes them stop permanently or go through the process before they can reopen. Same is true with expansion of a legal non-conforming structure or use. The village would put a halt to that. What summarizes is those three unique cases that were determined on a case-by-case basis, and that's really what we want, I think, you to give some thought to.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, Fred.
And that was it.
Thank you. Mayor?
Can I ask a question on the fundraising part of that? For the veterans, is it which one? Not the -- which was the -- yeah, the disabled veteran. I mean, that's our normal Thursday, and then they got Saturday and Sunday. But on the Wildcat Cheer, I'm a little bit, I mean, I don't want to sound like a Scrooge here, or I don't know what the word would be, but they're going to get this eleventh, the sixteenth, the twenty-third, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, the fourth, the fifth. I mean, that's a little bit much, I think, to be asking, and I don't know if this means they're going to be on the streets and the corners and intersections, and that's a lot to be asking to have them out there. Normally, I don't think, you know, it's usually a weekend that somebody's out there, or am I mistaken? Because I just think that's an awful lot to ask to have somebody out there, and we're trying, we've talked about cutting down on people being out there and all these people, you know, standing out in the corners and my, just a discussion for the board. What do you?
I don't, you know, you're right. I mean, now that I look at it, I don't remember having that many dates in the past.
When I actually look at this, I'm thinking, though, it's sort of a little different in that three of the dates are candy bar sales at the Jewel and at the train station. So they're really not on our streets, per se. And then there's two consecutive weekends where that's when they're on the street, which is probably two days more than we would normally allow.
Maybe one could be a rain date?
Oh.
They have to pick one or the other?
Yeah, maybe that's what they're thinking.
I don't know what they're thinking of, but I mean, we could say you can't be out. If you're out on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, then you're done. But if it turns out to be bad weather, we're proving that we'd be glad to see them out on the fourth, fifth, but.
Yeah.
It is two weekends in a row we're asking them to be out, and I guess taking it shake the can means they're going to be out in the street.
For those two is.
Another one.
You know, and I understand we have such wonderful organizations that are asking us to solicit funds, and times are tough, but it's getting to be that every time you come up to a red light, somebody's got a can in your window.
They are out there. Actually, it does not add up to the amount of time that the disabled veterans are out.
No, it's not the same time.
Yeah, it's very few, short hours.
Normally, what we do is with the disabled, it's usually a weekend, it's usually a couple of days.
Uh huh.
And then that's normally what people have asked for in the past, and we've granted that. This one just seems to be more to an extreme.
I mean, most groups, we've given them one weekend.
That's usually.
And we've allowed, we've allowed rain dates is what we've done. So.
So something to think about over the weekend, and then when we.
Should we put it on the agenda that way and contact them before Monday, that those latter two dates would be rain dates?
Well, I guess I defer to the attorney because per the board's instructions, this has already been approved because we've given the clerk's office the go-ahead to just approve these as they come in. So this has already been approved. So for me, I would rather just wait until next year, but I, you know, for me to discuss.
Technically, when you read the ordinance, the authority is with the chief of police to issue permits for charitable organizations that meet certain criteria. They have to be registered with the attorney general, statewide organizations with a local office, provide proof of insurance, et cetera. Neither of these two organizations qualify or meet the criteria, so technically, board approval is required. That's why it is coming before you. It's an ordinance we need to look at. I've been meaning to do it for some time, reword some language and perhaps put some limitations on it because the board's previously wanted the focus to be on local charitable organizations and not some random organization from Chicago or downstate or wherever, standing on your streets. So Ron and I talked about this. We would feel more comfortable if this gets in front of the board for approval despite the fact that it appears that the permit was issued, just so our housekeeping's in order, and if you want to put additional restrictions on it, that's your right.
Okay. Good. Rain date then for the second week?
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Where are we? Trustee Scott?
Just that I'd like to announce the cancellation of Monday night's public safety meeting till sometime in November, and we'll announce it another day. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce. Yesterday, they had their annual State of the Village luncheon. It was extremely well-attended, and our mayor did a fine job of going over the year and talking about the village. It's going to be on cable, so I would urge all of our residents to watch it. It's very informative, and there's a lot of really, really good information there. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was on November tenth, they will have another luncheon, and it'll be sort of the state of the schools. It'll be the Westmont School District and also the Marker School District. So really, a lot of good information, and I urge people to attend, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Fleming?
Just a couple of things to remind the residents of the village. This week that we're in right now, tomorrow, we'll complete the north side brush pickup for the fall, and on Sunday evening, the south side, any brush that you have, you need to take it to the curb. That will be the last brush pickup until spring. So anything that is taken out after next week and set at the curb, someone may politely come by and tell you, you need to take it to the back part of your property because it won't be picked up until spring. So I urge all of you, get your brush out that you need picked up, and we'll take care of it for you. And once we're done next week, then we'll be back in the spring, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Klebenow?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. With the board's permission, I'd like to jump to item number seven first on Westmont Holidays. I believe Larry McIntyre's here. It looks like it's pretty much cut and dried from what we've done in previous years to get that.
Thank you very much. Even though Halloween is our next major holiday, we've been planning holidays for many months, and in fact, the committee met again today, and I think we're very well organized for another successful year of holidays. Just a little bit of financial background. On the event for many years, this was an event that was funded in a great amount by the Hotel Motel Tax Fund, by the village board, but that funding had ceased as of this year. And because of our relationship with the Westmont Auto Mile, the event is continuing, and to the general public, they won't really notice much of a difference at all, especially when it comes to the opening ceremonies, which will still be the Friday after Thanksgiving, just as it has been for many years, and that includes the annual tree lighting, Frosty and Friends Parade, and then afterwards, everyone crosses the street to Westmont Center and gets free pictures with Santa. So it's a very fun community event, and we're looking forward to continuing that again. If I can get this up on the screen, that would be great. I'll go through a little bit of the items that we're going to have this year for the opening ceremonies. Even though the Westmont Center Open House begins at four, which means Westmont Special Events Corporation and, I'm trying to zoom out here, Westmont Special Events Corporation and the Chamber, their doors will be open as of four PM. A lot of the activities actually begin closer to five o'clock. So we'll have the reindeer there again, and we have the Westmont High School Choir. There's going to be wagon rides and the tree walk over at Veterans Memorial Park. And then for me, the best part of the evening is the Frosty and Friends Parade, which is going to kick off at six forty-five. That usually is completed, I'll say forty-five minutes is often shorter than that, depends on how many trains we have, but it's a very nice parade. And then once the parade is over, Santa comes and helps us light the tree, and then people go across the street, like I said, to have photos of Santa. And then, of course, Westmont Holidays continues throughout the month of December, and events like the Polar Express, which is a lot of fun, which kids get on the Metro train and enjoy a story read by actors as they travel out west and then come back, and they have refreshments with that. And then there's different events with lunch with Santa and different characters such as Frosty and Friends and things of that nature. Anyway, all of this information is available online with the Westmont Park District, and their website is www.wpd, the number four, fun, dot com. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about the requests that go before the village board, mostly in regard to the opening ceremony, but then also for the five K run, which is the Saturday after the opening ceremonies. So as you can see, we're asking for permission for amplified sound in the downtown area. We're asking for street closure on West Quincy Street, closure of Cass Avenue during the parade, which is approximately from Trobee to really Fifty-Fifth Street. We prevent northbound traffic from Fifty-Fifth Street on Cass Avenue during the parade, just for safety precautions. And then the final one is, like I said, the next day is the Holidays Five K, in which the race is run in the downtown area from Burlington up to Trobee, and all the information is there. And any questions?
So the requests are basically the same as last year?
Yes. Virtually, all the requests are exactly the same. Actually, something that's new with the race route is we moved it just a little bit further west. It doesn't involve any additional street closures, but we now no longer have to close Cass Avenue. We used to close Cass for the race, and we don't have to anymore.
Okay.
So that will hopefully make it more convenient.
Hey, Larry, could you kind of also let the public know that they're going to see some decorations and spots that they haven't seen in the past?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. For several years, people have suggested that the lighted displays that are in Veterans Memorial Park are wonderful, but let's maybe get some of those to the downtown area. During our committee meeting today, it was decided that they're going to allow us to have eight of those displays and try to find homes in the downtown. So I'll be working with village staff to find locations, but we're thinking, hopefully in front of Village Hall, in front of the train station, Mary Egan Park. Police and fire have already put in dibs for the decorations that they want, also the library. So hopefully, it'll brighten up the downtown and let everybody know that Holidays is here.
Okay.
Thanks for reminding me.
Very good.
Larry, is anything going to be different from last year? Do we cut anything, or is it going to be the same as last year?
You know, one aspect that was cut was the home decorating contest, in which we used to promote to residents to decorate your homes and then would give cash awards, and that aspect has been removed just because there's no funding for it. However, there is still a business decorating contest, and that's kind of being taken over by the Chamber, and they're organizing that. Outside of that, for instance, the wagon rides over at Veterans Memorial Park, they used to do wagon rides through the park, and that part has been reduced. But in whole, you're going to see most of the same event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First item, operable emergency radio project. Board to consider an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County to provide a countywide interoperable emergency dispatch radio system. We have a request from the manager to postpone this until a later date because the information is still not available.
Just for clarification, as you remember, we asked to remove it from the agenda last set of meetings because we were waiting for some legal input through the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. They had hoped to have that information sometime this week. They did not, so we're asking to postpone it indefinitely until we get that review back from them.
So the plan will be to just remove it from the agenda because we're not sure.
Yeah.
Next item, waiver request three twenty-five North Richmond. Board to consider the following request: A waiver of public sidewalk requirement for additions over one hundred and fifty square feet, and B waive cash in lieu payment for sidewalk installation.
Good evening, your honor, and committee. My name is Paul, Paul Design Builders. I'm here on behalf of Ray and Catherine Sedoma at the address three twenty-four North Richmond. They received a variance last month to go ahead and put an addition on their home so they could stay there. It's a buy level, and they want to come out the back. I guess you guys are familiar with that. And the mention of adding the sidewalks at that time was never brought up. So we're requesting that be waived, that sidewalk issue, because they just, well, there's no other sidewalks in the area, and there's a lot of work that would have to be done. And I have some photos of the area. Like, this is at the west side of the property. There's, this here is an electric pedestal that would have to be moved in order to put a sidewalk there. There's a lot of trees that would have to be cut down at Westmont's cost, and it would really ruin the corner. And this is Richmond, north and south, looking east, excuse me, looking west, and there are no sidewalks on, that's going west on Naperville Road, all the way down, there's no sidewalks. And let's see, and this is going towards Chicago Avenue, going south along Richmond. There are no sidewalks. So I think it would be out of place. Thank you. I think it would be out of place to put a sidewalk, plus these trees here are all on the property, and they would all have to be cut down, and it would really ruin the whole vantage point of the property. It's nice now, and that would have to be done at village cost because it's on village property. And so it's, and the people just can't afford it. They're, you know, they're older, and they want to stay in Westmont, and if they have to spend an extra twelve or thirteen thousand dollars for sidewalks because it's on a corner and it's roughly two hundred and twenty-five square feet of sidewalk, plus an additional twenty feet of public walk that would have to be made for handicap, ramp, stuff like that, off of the street, and they just can't afford that. And that would put a damper on their addition project that they can't afford. So I'm here on their behalf requesting that the sidewalk and the waiver for monies to be drafted, you know, to be forgiven in this instance, if that would be okay.
Questions, board members?
The only thing that I have to say about this is this is one of those scenarios that we've been dealing with for a long time, as we know as sidewalks to nowhere. I think it's something within our code that we need to go and take a look at and try to clean up because we do have a sidewalk program now in the village, and granted, it's going to take a period of time to get these done, but I think this is something that we need to clean up some language in that part, because I think in a lot of cases we've given, granted the variance in these kind of situations.
Is that a drainage area along the road there where the sidewalk would have to go?
Yeah. No, the sidewalk would go a little bit beyond that.
It'd go on the other side of it.
Yeah, uh huh. And as you see on this photo right here, all of these trees here would be right in the line of the sidewalk. They would all have to be cleared, and that's right along the corner there. And the people would be really upset if they had to do that, because that's what they like about the lot, because it's kind of wooded, and they've been taking care of it for however long they live there. And they would just hate to have to do that, but they won't, if it comes to cutting down the trees, they won't do their addition, and it's going to be a hindrance for them in later years because of their stair situation. That's why a variance was granted to them, so they could live on one level, get a, we're going to put a bedroom, a bathroom, and laundry facilities on the same floor as their kitchen, so, and their living room, so they don't have to keep going.
Could we perhaps ask Steve May to come up and give his interpretation of the request?
Mayor, the request is actually in two parts, and an understanding, the sidewalk is a requirement, it's a code requirement, and that's, you know, why he's here tonight. The sidewalks to nowhere is definitely, you know, a valid point, and for that reason is why there is a fee in lieu of program to do that. There is no objection to having the actual physical construction of the sidewalk omitted, and the purpose of the fee is to, in the event that there was ever, you know, a block-long or a street-long project to install the sidewalks, of which there are none planned, but if there ever were, by waiving the fees now. none planned, but if there ever were, by waiving the fees now, um, for something that would have been required, it's just additional expense in a, in a future capital improvement. So the, the burden is either construction or the, or the fee in lieu of. But as far as constructing it, there's no objection to omitting the physical construction at this time.
Okay.
Do we know what the actual fee is for this in lieu of?
There's an estimate in our packet.
It's in our packet.
Fifty-six twenty.
Fifty-six seventy-five.
And that's an estimate. About what it would be.
It says current sidewalk pricing is approximately five dollars per square foot. That says this is...
And even it's a little low, isn't it, from what we've talked about sidewalks?
Yeah, but...
Yep.
I told you I wasn't gonna adjust that till January, so it'd be more expensive if you wait a couple months.
Fifty-six seventy.
We calculated our actual costs to do sidewalk replacement. See, this is new construction, so there isn't removal and replacement, so that, that might be a fair, um, number. To remove and replace, I think our actual cost for large quantities was six dollars and twenty cents a square foot. And we were gonna change it to seven.
Any other questions?
Now, if, if we were to, well, I guess attorney, could you do partial wave? Do you get whole wave or was there...
Yeah, my, my only recommendation is pick a policy and enforce it evenly.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I always talk about variances being taken on a case-by-case basis, which is true in a zoning context, but in a context like this, um, if a resident is claiming financial hardship and you're willing to grant that, then, you know, do you want proof of the financial hardship? Um, is it gonna be in relation to the scope of the project? Is it gonna be based on the nature of the area? Come up with some guidelines, some policy to guide your decisions or simply eliminate the program. Uh, because I think you're gonna have residents that you may grant it to this homeowner but not to others.
Yeah.
I'm just happy they're trying to stay in town.
Yeah.
Put money into their property.
But how would this affect when you have, um, some of these tear downs and a new home being built without a sidewalk and then we're telling them that they have to put the money in lieu of, we're running into a problem where...
Well, I believe new construction is, this is not really new construction. They're just kinda improving what they have.
Well, it's not, but it did go over the, um, the amount. They, they did have a, a certain amount, so if you do a small construction, it wouldn't be, I don't know. I, I don't like it, but yet, um, maybe again, because this is a, a corner lot, you know, we could say he's gotta put half in because he should at least cover one portion of it, but i- if you're gonna waive, just expect everybody coming in now is gonna be asking for a waiver. So, you, we either gonna have to change it or you're gonna abide by it. I don't care if they work out a payout, small payout system for a long time. I don't care how they do it. I'm just scared of a waiver is gonna start a flood of, of, uh, people coming in and no matter what they do, when we say you gotta put a sidewalk or pay the money, I'm afraid they're gonna, everybody's gonna come in and try for the chance of getting us to waive the fee. So we're, you're either gonna have to decide, you don't want the program or if we want the program, we've gotta work something out that's easy for them for the payment or half the price because it's a corner, they got stuck with two sides.
John, you, you said you could ask for proof of financial burden. What would that involve?
Haven't really thought about it yet.
It was a good comment, though.
You know, it's, it's been brought up by the Planning and Zoning Commission before in the case of variances where someone is claiming an economic hardship with the numbers and the need for more density and, you know, I've heard Chairman Richards say, well, show me the financials for your business, show me why this is an economic hardship. It's a bit invasive to ask a homeowner for their tax returns.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I don't necessarily think that's the best way to go. Uh, I was just throwing it out there as, you know, a possible, if you're gonna consider criteria, that's one criteria.
In the last four or five years, how many times have we collected a fee in lieu of? Do we have any?
I imagine in every case. I, I don't...
Do you mean this?
I don't particularly remember a waiver like this coming before the board.
Right.
I, I, I remember cases where people have said, I don't wanna build a sidewalk to nowhere, I'd rather provide the waiver, or the, I'm sorry, the payment in lieu of.
Right, yeah.
Not the waiver. Okay, um, just to move things on, I think everybody's aware of the situation, what's being asked for. We have the weekend conjure what, uh, you think ought to be done and we'll, um, be on the agenda for, uh, Monday for consideration.
Okay. Well, thank you.
We appreciate your coming in.
It's, you know, it's just that they are retired, they wanna stay in Westmont and it's, I think it's a financial burden on them if they have to come up with additional monies that they may not even, you know, in the, in the future, you know, I, I don't think that sidewalks will ever be there unless someone really does something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, downtown development grant thirty-seven West Quincy. Board to consider a downtown development grant request from Mr. Greg Krasowski for the property at thirty-seven West Quincy Street.
This is the furniture store, right? I agree with you. Son? Good evening, um, my name is Greg Krasowski and I am the owner of the property next door, thirty-seven. And, uh, I've asked the, uh, the board to consider the grant for the facade improvement at that building. It's, it's badly in need of removing the signs and what we're gonna do is replace the existing box sign and wooden structure that's on the, on the property now with a, uh, contemporary awning, most likely to be green. Oh, thank you Fred.
It's gonna make it green, though.
It, yes, uh, it, it's shown in, uh, in black, uh, it was just an arbitrary choice, but after speaking with Fred and some people, I, I think Hunter Green was a, a better choice. And that was, uh, th- this photo is, it really does show off the need for, uh, that improvement and the, uh, the process would involve removing the, all of this external sign structure, which, uh, most of the time the tenants in the, in the building would, would like to have kept these signs because it's exposure, but at this point, it's, it, it needs to be done. Also, there's a, uh, a proposal that I, I was able to, uh, to get together to also tuck point the, uh, the front of the building at, at the same time before the, the awnings were erected. So the process would be the, uh, the removal of the, oh, thank you, of the, uh, the removal of the, of the signs that are up there now and then completely, uh, re, re-clean and, and grind out tuck point and, uh, restore the front of the building to, to look like a new, actually look like a new property. And what I've got is, uh, a proposal for, uh, that project would involve any, it's, it's gonna cost eighteen hundred and fifty dollars to do the, the brickwork there, which, which would totally replace all the, the bad joints on the front before the awnings were actually replaced. And then the awnings would be, uh, covering the whole, thank you Fred, the whole width of the building. The property's thirty feet wide. It would be two separate structures, would look, it would look congruent, it'd be probably pretty much joined at the center and could be used by the tenants for their signage at, at a later date. And also, I do believe there is a, included in that proposal for this, for the awnings is, uh, electrical, uh, oh, what, what is the cost? Or gooseneck, yes, excuse me, that, there would have, uh, I believe, uh, thank you, uh, four gooseneck shine down, uh, type of, uh, awning to, to kinda make the, make the appearance of the property look a little more attractive to retail tenants. And that's kinda my goal over there. I've been there thirty, thirty-five years and, uh, have always had a tenant in there in spite of what it seems like now, but, um, we're hoping to get some, uh, a, a, a better retail product in there soon. And, uh, that's, uh, pretty much the whole project. The awning and the, uh, the lights look like the, uh, the total installed, uh, figure. What, yes, Fred, go ahead.
Um, yes, Your Honor, the village board, I think in your packet, received a synopsis of the, uh, minutes of the October seventh, uh, downtown development grant committee meeting. And in that meeting, you'll see that Mr. Krasowski originally just submitted for the gooseneck lighting and the awning. Uh, following a discussion at that particular committee meeting, the committee unilaterally suggested to Mr. Krasowski that he also consider tuck pointing and cleaning the brick because in removing these old sign structures up here, that might cause some, uh, uh, discoloration in the comparison of the areas behind the signs and so forth. So that was, uh, suggested. Uh, Mr. Krasowski then did go out and, uh, receive the appropriate quotations and I just hand, uh, printed a little bit of a synopsis then of what the, uh, the resulting recommendation was from the downtown development grant committee, which would be total eligible expenses for the three items of six thousand sixty-three dollars. Uh, the total eligible grant would be fifty percent. Uh, the committee would therefore recommend, as per the minutes of that meeting, a, a grant of three thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents to, uh, accomplish these changes and beautify the building.
Fred, oh, what were the comments on the, um, the signs on the side of the building?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Krasowski has agreed that that sign, uh, will, will come down as well. I think, Your Honor, you're, you're referencing this sign right up here on the side of the building. So this, this structure, this structure and this framework would all be pulled down off of there before the awning and gooseneck lighting are installed. We think that's a, a good improvement to the building.
Maybe we should add that as a condition to the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
So the signage that each of the stores will use will be on the awning? Or are they gonna be, what are they gonna use for signs then for the stores?
There should be sufficient space above the awning at a later date if they would choose to go ahead and utilize that twenty-four, I think it's a two-foot, uh, area that's, uh, apparently is gonna be above the awning. Or they can use the awning itself.
So somebody could come in and then remove this awning on the one side, put up their own with...
Oh, they would just remove the, remove the fabric and re...
I understand that, but I'm saying, but they could put their sign like we've got in other parts of the village.
Exactly.
Trustee, I, I don't know if Greg, I don't know if you're aware, you're an awning guy, said that they were gonna do this, like, on that, the downside flap of the awning? Is, does that...
That's, that's correct.
So like down, down here, there's a flap that hangs down that runs perpendicular to the street. And this sign could appear on...
Like the funeral home's gonna do.
Yes, sir.
So then if a new tenant comes in, they only have to remove the bottom portion?
Maybe they could get away with just removing, that'd be a lot less expensive, uh, replacement.
Good.
Green.
Yes, sir. And, uh, the applicant, uh, were pleased, did accept our, a suggestion, not a requirement, but a suggestion to go green rather than, than black.
That'll look nice. It'll look very nice.
Of course.
We don't wanna confuse them with the funeral home.
That's right.
Or vittori.
Yeah, or yeah.
How many, how many black awnings do we have already? Any other questions, board members?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Thank you for coming in and will be on our agenda on Monday.
Thank you, thank you to the board.
Thank you. Next one, Westmont Market Grocery, three seventeen to three thirty-one East Ogden. Board to consider a storm sewer connection cost participation request from the Westmont Market Grocery developers, West Highland Capital Partners.
You're kicking it up. Got it?
Yeah.
Start. So, good evening and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And, um, my name is Vince Priest and I was gonna have my partner, Andre Redon, talk a little bit about the scope of the project and then I'll get into the specifics of the petition.
Well, good evening. We, uh, getting used to this room anyway, but, um, let me just introduce myself, maybe a little bit about the project if that, if that would be helpful. But, um, I actually grew up in Chicago, uh, went to college in Wheaton, um, been gone for a long time and, and a couple of months ago moved back to get this project going with my family, um, along with my partners, who, some of whom are here tonight. Um, we've got a, had a vision for, um, doing something a little bit different in, in, it's not really grocery, but in, in retail food. And, uh, a lot of people initially think that we're gonna try to do something similar to what a Whole Foods has do, has done, but this is really, I think, a uniquely different approach. This is actually, um, and, and I'm gonna let Vince actually walk through most of these pictures with the, I'll, I'll click to the front because it will touch on one of the things, but, um, it's really an executive chef-driven concept. So, we've just moved into our offices on Chicago Avenue and, and inside of that office, we've incorporated a, a test kitchen with, um, all the capabilities that we'll need to scale up the products that we're gonna have. But this is, uh, if you think about it, what we're trying to do here is sell ingredients. Uh, we'll have a restaurant and we'll, there'll be four ways for a consumer to really interact with the business. One is, if you wanna, you know, it's about celebration of food where, you know, it's not really, I mean, it is about healthy eating, but it, it's really not, doesn't have an organic dimension to it per se. Uh, it might apply at some point, but, um, you can come in with your own recipe and our goal is to provide the very best ingredients, right? To make the best meal, takes the best ingredients, the best recipes and then, of course, the best cooking. So, um, you can come in with your recipe and we've got produce, meat, seafood, dairy, deli, bakery. I think the building in, in total is about thirty-three thousand square feet. Um, it will have a restaurant in the center. That restaurant would offer soup, salad, sandwiches, pizza and, um, what we call what's for dinner tonight, which will be a rotating, uh, meal that you can, can, can buy to take home or that you can consume in the restaurant. So the four ways you can enjoy what we, we have to offer is the first way I described. Secondly, we'll have a variety of recipes. So for example, and those will be really, I would say, home cooking type products, generally speaking, lasagnas, meatloafs, chicken. Um, you can come in, take our recipe, assemble the ingredients, go home and prepare it. You can buy it sort of on a to-go basis, uh, preheated, ready to go, or you can enjoy it in the restaurant. Some of the unique features that we're gonna have are valet parking, using some interesting technology. Uh, it's covered so you can drive your car underneath if it's raining outside or whatever. It might be a terrific way to go. You'd get a laminated, uh, sort of a card with a barcode on it, do your shopping and when you were, uh, I don't know what happened here, but when you, uh, were done, when you go to checkout, the first thing we'll ask you is, did you valet park? And if you say yes, you give us your valet parking card and we'll scan it through and by the time you're done checking out, you've gone out with your groceries, your car should be there, loaded up and, and you can also self-park, it's kind of both. But, um, that's kinda what we're up to. This is a, a prototype. We've chosen Chicago as the market that we, that we'd like to, to pursue for a wide variety of reasons and the site that Vince has put together in Westmont, we're very excited about, excited about being here and, um, I'll let him take it from there.
So, again, my name's Vince Priest. I've, uh, spent the good part of the last twenty-four hours in this building. And so, uh, tonight, you know, I, I just thought I'd tell you, amplify what Andre said just a little bit and then, uh, get right to it with regard to our request. So, our business is called, um, you know, uh, uh, Changing the Way You See Grocery. And this is what's at the site at present. So it's at the intersection of Richmond and Ogden Avenue. You see to the left, Car X. You see in the middle, Old Plank Antique and you see to the right, behind Car X was a property owned by a gentleman named Randall Yater. There was a building on there that was demolished. And those are some of the buildings on the assemblage. This is, uh, the site plan with the vegetation in place. So on the top right corner of the screen, that's the intersection of Ogden and, uh, Richmond Avenue. And our building is sited, it's called a, uh, neighborhood market style. So rather than citing our building at the rear of the property, we've cited the building adjacent to Ogden Avenue so that it would soften the transition between the commercial district and the residential district. So this is the elevation Andre just showed you. So if you were standing at McGrath Accura and you were, or not McGrath, but the, but the Accura dealership and you were looking south and west, that's the back of our building which faces Ogden. If you turned down Richmond and took a right and pulled into our parking lot, that's the front of our building and those are the valet parking on, awnings that Andre was referring to. And then just some, um, and then I'll walk you through the store. So, when you approach the store, that's the entrance. When you walk inside, that's the produce department. Um, myself and my partners, we're, we're a bunch of, uh, produce guys. We've spent the majority of our adult lives working for a California farming company in Bakersfield called Bolthouse Farms. We know the produce business very well and we decided to get into this business because we've traveled around the country for the last fifteen-plus years selling to retail grocery stores and we've seen the best concepts throughout the country and this store is what we believe to be, um, cherry picking all the best ideas for each one of these departments. So this is the produce department in our store. That would be the wine and cheese department in the store. That would be our bakery. We're gonna have a from scratch bakery, so, so we will literally be pouring flour into a mixing bowl with eggs and butter and milk and all of those things, making bread from scratch. This is our, uh, meat department. It'll be a full butcher shop. We'll have a seafood shop as well. And then that would be the dairy department. And then when you leave the store and you're looking... And then when you leave the store, and you're looking south, that's what our parking lot will look like. So if you see at the very end of the parking lot, you see that fence there, that's the transition between the commercial district and the residential district. And the purpose of the conversation tonight was with regard to the site plan. There are tie-ins to the sewer at present on Ogden Avenue, and there's also a tie-in on Blackhawk. And it would be really efficient for us to use those existing tie-ins. The village has recommended and requested that we tie in, not, and not avail ourselves of the sewer access that's there at present, but that we tie in at the intersection of Richmond and Trobe. And to accomplish that, we would have to put in an 18-inch line from the bottom right-hand side of the screen there you see, to the intersection of Trobe. It's a little over 300 feet, I think it's 320 feet. And the expense involved will be between $75,000 and $100,000. And that's incremental expense that was brought to our attention after we made the decision for this site and to go forward with all of these plans. And so I'm here tonight to ask the village to participate in that incremental expense. And the benefit to the village is that the stormwater system is at capacity, apparently, at the tie-in that's closest and most convenient for us on Blackhawk, at the intersection of Blackhawk and Trobe, apparently the village is, or the system is at capacity right there, so they're recommending this other tie-in.
Could you explain to me about the cost figures on the tie-in?
Yeah, absolutely. I met with Noriel, Noriel, and Fred and Shannon, and who was the other person?
Kim Nichol.
Kim Nichol, and I asked for a cost estimate, and that's where I got it.
Okay, Vince, I guess I'm a little bit confused on that. I thought we were talking somewhere in the vicinity of $25,000 total, was that-
I think that was the cost of the permits you were saying for our project in general.
No, I think, Steve, can you help us a little bit there? I think we were talking in terms of the linear foot cost there, plus the cost of maybe having to redo some driveway aprons there, as being in the range of $25,000, and I think that was the number-
I didn't calculate it myself, but that was my understanding, what I heard from Noriel when I got back from the meeting, so I just, you know, took that information. But I, you know, your own engineer might have estimated-
No, no, I took notes that day, so if the numbers are different, that was my understanding from that day.
Okay. You know, we'll double-check that, Vince, but I think, to the best of my recollection, we were in the $25,000 range there, based on that 300-foot scenario. And what we have suggested as a staff is that there, it is possible, because, and Steve, we don't want to misquote the village attorney here, but basically it has to do with the capacity issue of the existing storm sewers in the area. So in order to-
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure.
Just to describe the process that led us to this point, the, I regret I didn't bring a topography with me, but when we, you know, initiated the engineering review, there, the assemblage of the parcels, there's a good portion that inherently drains the Blackhawk Drive, there is a good portion that naturally drains to Richmond Avenue, and there's a small part up front that drains out onto Ogden Avenue. And there is a connection on Ogden Avenue, but it is a totally separate watershed. That water all ends up, it goes north through Oakwood. The rest of the, the majority of the parcel drains south into the northeast acres and into the storm sewer that's on Trobe. It all drains east from there, down Trobe, out Richmond. So even though, if I can turn the projector on, please, even though the, you know, there is storm sewer access at Blackhawk Drive, the, I'm going to have to, I only had an address map, you know, available. So the development is, is here. And, and I said, there was, there's storm sewer access available on Blackhawk Drive, but the pipe comes down here, comes down to Trobe Avenue and east into Clarendon Hills. Whether half this water, and I'm going to call it half, because the port that's tributary to Ogden Avenue is very small, they could do a very complex engineering design and have three different detention systems, you know, on the site and drain into three different directions, but that, without looking into it, that wouldn't really be economically feasible. I mean, we would know that already. So bringing all this water down, they originally, they wanted to tie into Blackhawk Drive, so this entire site was going to come through this system and around and out this way. It's not that they can't do that, it's that we already know we have, you know, issues in the capacity of the pipe here, and what would be required to prove that they have the capacity to connect to it would be to study this whole capacity of the storm line all the way down into Clarendon Hills. Now, that's something we're already doing with our consultant, it's just that the timing is different. They're here, ready to go now, and we're, you know, let's just call it a year away from having that, you know, report for that, for this whole, you know, quadrant. So short of doing that analysis, the, the option is, is you can run the pipe down here because it's all, whether it goes this way or this way, it's all tributary to this point, and it goes east. So they are permitted to do that quickly with a pipe. And now, so there is a cost involved with extending the storm sewer down there, but that's kind of in lieu of doing the analysis of the whole system to prove that they can connect right there to Blackhawk Drive, which I, just in my opinion, would probably be more expensive to do the study than it would be to extend the storm sewer. So we know they could move much faster by using the Richmond Avenue option. So that's the history of conversations that, you know, led up to this point.
Steve, it, you know, again, I apologize for any misunderstanding here, Vince, but I, 95% confident I heard the figure $25,000 rather than $75,000 is an approximate cost for an 18-inch line to go that direction, 300 feet.
I, you know, I'm leaning towards $25,000, but I mean, without actually-
Okay.
Doing it and counting all the driveways and everything.
And we'd be happy to verify that.
It is all draining a ditch right now, you know, there's a small summit right here, and all that water in that right-of-way is tributary to that direction, but it's open channel, so.
What's on-site, the water retention? Is there any?
It's, yeah.
Under.
Underground.
Per cone and extensive. So they're going to have one point of outlet for the aggregate collection of stormwater management on the entire assemblage.
And that's going to be released in a very slow-
Right.
Situation, instead of all this water coming down right now and going down the-
Right.
Going down the gully, so to speak, and portion all this water now, it's going to go down under and be released, correct?
Sure. I mean, like any, right, any development in the stormwater management is to collect all of it, store it, you know, by a calculated volume, provide that amount of storage, and then release it at a controlled rate.
There's some question last night by residents as to the size of the pipe this 18-inch extension would be connecting to once it hits Trobe. And I don't know if the residents were misinformed that it would, they were saying it's going to connect to a smaller-sized pipe than 18-inch?
Whether it's smaller or not, the pipe sizing is, because it's a new sewer, will have to accommodate not only their release rate, but then any water that is picked up in that ditch line on the way down to the corner. So because it's a new pipe, and ignoring the capacity of the existing sewer, you would size that accordingly, and being bigger, then you're actually getting additional benefit because you're storing volume of water in the pipe itself. Now, our project is to look at the capacity of that storm sewer on Trobe Avenue, its relationship to the village of Clarendon Hills, and that's a much bigger issue, but that's something we're tackling already.
So it's immaterial from a stormwater, moving stormwater, whether the pipe it's connecting to is smaller or not? The water's going to be held on-site and drained off properly. I'm just trying to think about some of the resident questions that were raised last night.
So if the, and, you know, can't say for sure what the existing diameter of the sewer is on Trobe, but let's say it's 12 inches in diameter and we're connecting an 18 to it. If you only connected with a 12, or a 6, or an 8, when you went and fixed the size of the pipe that is the weakest link, now you, you're, now you're undersized, you know, your new improvement. So you have to build the new improvement to its, its design size, even if there's no capacity at the end of the project. We did the same with Blackhawk Drive. The storm sewer sizing was to accommodate the right-of-way, but it's connected to Trobe Avenue, and that is the restriction for the neighborhood.
What type of underground storage or above-ground storage is anticipated for the, the rest of the property, and where?
For the, for this assemblage?
Yes.
Yeah. And just to back up one thing, if I have the numbers wrong, or if they have, all we're here to talk about is whatever the expense is, so whatever the number is, is what the number is. And I don't think I'm wrong, but if I do, it's for that expense regardless. To answer your question, the, the system is going to be about 60% underground, 40% above-ground.
Okay. Okay.
And I think I could get a little bit more specific if this would come back up. Okay, so the corner right here? That's where the above-ground detention will be? And then the below-ground detention will be to the right of that.
Can I ask a quick question? Just seeing Steve's picture and then seeing this. This is, is this a Blackhawk right?
Yes, it is.
So this is, is this the main entrance that you were saying that has the awning and valet parking? Is that here?
To your right, keep going to your right, right there.
Oh, on this side? No, it's right here. So this is, this is the building itself.
Right.
So you got Richmond, and so that, that, that is here. Oh, that's over there. Yeah. There's two. So this is an entrance, and this is the way out. Okay.
To the right is drop-off, to the left is pickup.
Okay, thank you.
But, Your Honor, staff will work this out with the petitioners here, and we can bring that exact figure back to the board tomorrow, so that we can verify the, shall we say, the vicinity of this additional investment that's being requested. One of the things that we had talked about is, I don't think it matters to the petitioner what form the participation is to the village, and perhaps a more appropriate way to do this would be to approximate one-half of the cost of this with perhaps some waiver, a partial waiver of permit fees that would translate into a cost savings for the applicants as well, if approval for the project can, can be acquired in the near future. But that's, that's what staff would certainly recommend. Certainly, it's unfortunate that we've reached a situation here where we have a creative developer who's assembling several parcels of ground, willing to engineer them under modern stormwater standards, and yet we're faced with a, you know, somewhat of an antiquated storm sewer system here, so that, you know, the capacity just doesn't seem to be there, that this, this additional 18-inch line is being required as a part of the development to ensure that there's a minimal impact in terms of stormwater effects to neighboring properties.
Fred, let me make sure I understand. The water is going to go from the southeast corner down Richmond to tap into the Trobe?
Yes.
And what do they have now for their stormwater in there? It's strictly ditch?
Yeah, there's, there's really not much of anything, trustee. We've got six or seven parcels that have never before been engineered under modern stormwater standards and requirements. So what, the board may be familiar with this, this vast parking lot now for the Old Plank Road Antiques property. And what they did a number of years ago is they went in there and they just laid pavement across all the ground and covered up the ground with no accounting for stormwater detention on-site, no modern engineering standards of any kind. So what you have is the back half of that parking lot is pitched south towards the neighborhood residents, the individual, single-family homes. And what happens when you get a heavy rain, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a sheet-flow effect, where all that water just floods those houses to the south. When these developers get approval for their plans, that south end of the parking lot will be pitched toward the center of their parking lot, will go into a catch basin to be retained on-site in a very expensive underground storage vault combined with above-ground storage, and released at a controlled rate into this new 18-inch storm sewer line. This can only benefit the neighboring areas in terms of the stormwater improvement that they will see as a result of this development. And that's because we can apply modern stormwater design engineering standards to six or seven parcels that have never had this application, has never, never been subjected to this requirement before, because they were developed at a time before the modern stormwater standards were in place.
Well, what, the reason I was asking is if that rest of the residents south of there is virgin, going, flowing over the land, flowing over the ditch in the side of the road, if there's no plans in the future to have them, but I was just wondering if we could do a, kind of a tap-in fee on there, should anybody want to attach to it?
It's called a recapture agreement, and that's up to the developer to figure out if they would want a recapture. Complicated if the village decides to participate in the cost.
That's, yeah.
But that would simply just reduce the amount of their recapture they're eligible for.
I just didn't know what the chance would be for somebody or that one section to, you know, they did it to part of our street on Des Moines, where part of it has the underground water, and the rest of it, like my part, has the ditch. So I was just wondering if there was ever any plans to do something in that area, they could do a recapture if we're not involved, but if we're involved, it'll get complicated.
Yeah, I would just add that the sewer will be in the public right-of-way, and it'll be primarily draining the ditch that we would normally do. So there really isn't any recapture opportunities from any residences along that route. So if you want to think of this as they're looking for a recapture from the village because of our benefit for draining the right-of-way.
Sometimes you see like-
That's the right term.
So there's no way a resident could tap into it?
It's not that they couldn't. I mean, it would be a public storm sewer, but that's not, it's not like a sanitary sewer service or a water line where, you know, that's a highly requested utility, so.
Well, I mean, if they're paying for it, or whether we're helping, I mean, to me, it becomes a very private sewer line that nobody could tap into unless they paid some fee, whether it was to the village or to the owner of it.
When they were, no. They're required to extend the public improvement to their property, so instead of extending it down from the parcel to Trobe, you're actually extending the sewer from Trobe up to the parcel. That will be a public sewer when they're done, it'll be village-owned. All the portion in the right-of-way. It's just the, the cost of accommodating the development.
We're going to own it, right now, as it sets, they pay for it, unless we agree to?
That's, it's true in any development.
Right.
Public improvements, curb and gutter, public sidewalks, street lighting when it applies.
Paving alleys behind a new building.
Yeah.
Those are all. But, Your Honor, we will verify that number, get that out in a memo electronically to the Village Board tomorrow, and nail that down before Monday's meeting, give you an opportunity to look that over, over the weekend.
Great.
The Attorney, John Zemini, has some comments regarding the order of approval, all the different approvals for this project. Would you care to elaborate, John?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor. Procedurally, this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission last night for the very first time. The developers had taken the time to send out notice to some of the surrounding residents who were closest to the project, to meet with the residents ahead of time to try and answer their questions, compromise of some of the issues. They've tried to design this to create as little impact as possible from what they testified to last night. Nevertheless, there was a petition signed by, I think it was 100 or so people objecting to this project, and there was a large turnout last night, and the meeting went very late because of the residents who were here. They're up for rezoning some of the residential lots to commercial, site plan approval, plat of consolidation, and a variance for signage. The public hearing was continued last night, it wasn't completed. It was asked by the Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, that the parties try and meet and try and resolve some of their differences, or at the very least, agree not to agree, but try and resolve as many problems as possible. And then they scheduled a special meeting for November 3rd with this project as a whole coming before you on November 11th. I just have a concern, if you're putting the cart before the horse, voting on this standalone is going to send the wrong message to the residents. You may absolutely love this project, you may want to vote for this project, but you don't have all the facts yet. And politically, I think it's better to hear what the residents have to say also, and vote on all of this together. You can vote on this on Monday and condition your vote on approval of all of the other matters, and there's nothing wrong with that. Certainly, you can make approval in phases. That may give the developers some peace of mind, hey, we know, at the very least, if you approve the project, we have some cost sharing. That's fine, but I just want to make you aware that there was perhaps an unexpected large turnout of residents opposed to this.
Well, there's a big difference between 25,000 and 100,000, and I'd like to know what the price is, and I would prefer to maybe add this portion with the rest of it, so we're all together on the same page. I know they're working it out, I watched the end of the meeting, so I know they've got a lot to work out with the residents there. So I don't know about the rest of the board, but I would prefer for us to get the price, but I would prefer to hold off on voting on this and- So, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I would prefer for us to get the price, but I, I would prefer to hold off on voting on this and.
Trustee, one of the things that I think prompted this one, um, when Mr. Priest originally heard that we were gonna require a three-hundred-foot extension of a storm sewer, I think you were thinking, what, hundreds of thousands of dollars, Vince? And, you know, we got together and said, oh, no, it's, it's just a small fraction of that in terms of the cost. He was much more comfortable with this, and originally, you know, had wanted to come forward at this time, I think, thinking that this is gonna be in the hundreds of thousands or a million dollars, and we were able to reassure him, certainly it's not that much. Now, yes, we, we do need to nail this number down to make sure that it's more in line with what staff thought it was. If, if we're in error, we stand corrected and we apologize for that error, but we, we're fairly confident that the, the figure is in the twenty-five thousand dollar range.
And, uh, you know, i- if you don't wanna make a vote on Monday, and that's your choice, you can at least, if you want, you know, kind of take a straw poll and say, you know, in general, how do you feel about it? Maybe to give some assurances to the developer, understanding you haven't received all of the information yet. But they may wanna know some feedback, at least by Monday, before, as they proceed.
I don't have a problem with that. Giving some feedback to them. I mean, I'd like to know what the numbers are, definitely.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other, any other comments?
So, we're gonna postpone the vote from Monday, then, on this? That's what I would agree, to postpone. I, I think anything we do on Monday would send a message to the residents that I think, uh, would be.
We're not listening.
What's that?
That we're not listening.
Yes, and I think we need to hear what they have to say. I understand where the petition was coming from, and I think the message would be unfair to them if we take, even take a straw poll and then the petitioners come out and we're like, eh, okay, and then we gotta change back to, I mean, I, I would rather have all the information and, and digest it that way and listen to the residents and then.
Well, not only that, there's such a big difference in what we're hearing in the price that, how can we even say if we can budget something and, and we can afford something? So, I mean, we would actually have to go back and check with, you know, our finance department to see if, if it's a hundred thousand and we're sharing it, can we afford it? If it's twenty-five, we might be able to.
And we're gonna do it by waiving permits or whatever, yeah, we, we need more information, I think.
Mr. Priest has indicated, I don't think he has any problem.
No sense of urgency for this piece?
No problem.
Then we'll plan on November eleventh with everything else.
So, what's the next meeting with the residents, then?
The third.
I met, I met with, uh, one of the representatives for the neighborhood group this morning for two hours, and then I will be meeting with, uh, more folks over the next week, and then we're gonna have another meeting, I believe, back at this facility on November third.
Okay.
I, I think, um, our intention is to, to try to keep staff, uh, informed of sort of how that's going and.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that, and we, nonetheless, uh, in spite of, I mean, in concert with the board's wishes tonight to postpone this, we will, uh, get you that number tomorrow and try to nail that down a little bit more closely.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to make one comment. I did watch the P and Z meeting last night, so I know there were a lot of people there, the concerns that they have, but all of us, I think, sitting here either watch it at that point in time or within a couple of days, we do watch the P and Z meetings. It's not a case that we don't just wait until it gets to there and comes to us, I mean, we do watch that. So, we are aware that they were there, we're aware of their concerns, and by all means, if things can be worked out, I mean, that's great, uh, makes things move a lot easier and a lot swifter, but I guess we're gonna know come, uh, November eleventh.
As always, Your Honor, I think, uh, you know, the developers as well as staff are, you know, wish to take into account the concerns of, of neighboring residents. On the other side of the coin, I, I don't know, if, I don't wanna place Mr. Priest and Andre in any kind of an uncomfortable position, there is a considerable, uh, dollar investment being made in this proposed project. You know, I, I don't think it's an overstatement to say, you know, a multimillion-dollar development project considering the cost of land acquisition and the design of the building and, and what we're talking about here. Uh, Vince, you may wanna take this opportunity to just talk in general terms, about a hundred and twenty jobs to be created by the project.
Yeah. Some of the benefits to the Village of Westmont is, um, we're gonna take down some older buildings that have maintenance issues, and we'll be putting up a state-of-the-art building which we just demonstrated. It's gonna generate sales tax, it's gonna generate significant property tax. So, we will be creating, um, more than a hundred and twenty jobs when the business is operational.
That's nice.
And, uh, we'll employ local advertisers and local contractors, as evidenced by our office building at two oh four Chicago Avenue. We hired a local Westmont resident for our general contractor and used, uh, some local, um, folks as well to do the build-out there, and we'll do the same with this building.
That's nice.
You know, I think it's, 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 you know, one of the first things we think about when we think about a retail business in our town. We say that, that's very desirable because that generates sales tax, and we know how important a source of revenue that is to, to village government, to pay the salaries and provide the services that the residents in our community have come to expect and, and, and know. Uh, but by the same token, uh, this project will also take and elevate the values of, of six somewhat, you know, antiquated properties and result in a much new, higher assessed valuation based on this considerable real estate improvement. This will generate an incre- increased stream of property taxes to our school district, our park district, our library district, as well as the Village of Westmont. So, tho- those are public benefits that inure to the entire community as a result of new development like this. So, we, uh, again, wanna take the, the concerns of the residents in, into account as this project moves forward and minimize the impact on their quality of life, but we also wish to, uh, point out to the, the other twenty-six thousand two hundred and eleven residents of this great community that this is a good economic development project which will have, uh, spillover benefits in many areas in addition to the jobs that it may provide, uh, for some folks who may be down on their luck and out of work.
Mr. Priest, do you have an estimated sales figures for a year? Projected?
Yeah, yeah, I think our top-line revenue, um, will be in, north of twenty-five million to thirty million dollars per year.
Percentage on, uh, sales tax from food?
I think it's one percent.
Nice.
Thank you.
Not a bad piece of change.
Any other, any other questions?
No, looks like a beautiful project.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak there.
Thank you for, uh, coming in and presenting your, um, your situation initially this evening. We will continue our discussion on this on, on Monday. Thank you. Next item, Lincoln Mercury Dealership, fifty West Ogden, board to consider request from Mr. Mark Iozzo to replace faulty granite panels with stucco material for the Lincoln Mercury Dealership building at fifty West Ogden. We have a request from Lincoln Mercury to, uh, remove this from our agenda. Mainly because, uh, as I understand it, Lincoln Mercury is not, uh, in favor of the stucco material that, uh, they wanted to replace the granite materials with. So, uh, that is a, a point that's being discussed at this time between Lincoln Mercury and the Lincoln Mercury Dealership organization. Any questions? Moving right along, Energy Savings Grants, Police Department, board to authorize execution of the, uh, following grant requirements to retrofit certain lamp fixtures in the Westmont Police Department. A, an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, and B, a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant in the amount of eight thousand sixty-four dollars.
Tuesday night at the Public Works Committee meeting, we heard a report from our facilities manager. Sometime last year, we, um, had the Smart Energy Design Assistance Center perform an energy audit of the police department. It was a free audit, uh, it's a service that they provide, and as, uh, part of that ongoing service, if you want to have additional audits done on your public buildings, uh, they ask that you act on those audits and try to, um, uh, take steps to, uh, improve energy efficiency. Um, since that audit was done, our facilities manager's been doing a lot of research trying to find grant opportunities for, uh, funding some of those improvements, and, uh, he did find this particular grant opportunity. It actually involves two grants. Uh, one is a Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, that's the one in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the other one is a, a grant through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of eight thousand sixty-four dollars. Um, this money will be used to change out, um, uh, the lamp fixtures in the police department from T-twelve lamps to, to T-eight lamps. And, uh, as was explained Tuesday night, um, you know, we hope to continue this effort, try to find additional grant money, and hopefully, um, be able to take advantage of another audit on another building and also try to improve energy efficiency in, in those buildings.
Well, I think the other thing wasn't the, one comment that he made too, that part of this grant, in order to get this grant, all of the parts that are gonna be used have to be manufactured in the United States.
That's correct.
They cannot be purchased from overseas or whatever. It all has to be manufactured and made within the United States in order to get these grant funds.
That's good.
So, and I, I compliment him, he's kind of new at doing the grant writing, and he did a, did a tremendous job. And, uh, if we can, we can pull this one off, I think we can get a couple of more and cut our energy costs even more throughout the village.
I think it was an example of persistence too, I think he mentioned that he had tried several attempts, and he's kinda learned as the process has gone along, so I, I'm sure, uh, efforts, uh, in the future will be even better.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, Request for Proposals for Tax Increment Financing. Tiff, board to consider authorization to release the Request for Proposals for Tax Increment Financing Consulting Services in the C-one Commercial Business District, South Westmont Business District.
Thank you, Your Honor. Based on previous instruction from the, uh, Westmont Village Board, staff had the village planner prepare an RFP to secure, uh, interest from consultants with regard to a tax increment financing district in the southern portion of the village in the area roughly approximating the South Westmont Business District. You have before you here tonight, uh, a request to authorize the release of these RFPs to a consultant list to secure proposals for such services in the Village of Westmont. Staff is prepared to answer any questions that the board may have in that regard.
Fred, the question that I have is, I mean, we're looking at the C-one district. I guess my question would be, if, um, this is something that we're looking at, wouldn't it be more financially responsible if there were some other areas that we were possibly looking at to do it all at one time instead of doing it in portions?
That, that is a possibility, if we wanted to consider multiple areas, uh, the RFP could be amended to include other areas such as the downtown central business district, perhaps east and west Chicago Avenue, Naperville Road, other areas that the board might deem appropriate. We recall discussion about that at the board level, but no specific direction in that regard. Uh, staff is, of course, especially mindful of the, the shortage of funds that we have at this time given, uh, national economic circumstances as well, but, uh, we're prepared to proceed in whatever direction the board, uh, would, would, uh, suggest.
Fred, couldn't, or is it possible that if we do look at other areas of the community and include it in the RFP, isn't it also possible that that could inflate the cost? In that they would have more to examine and more to.
Oh, yes, yes, uh, I, I think, what, I don't wanna speak for trustee Fleming, but I'm thinking, you know, if we did have a consultant, could they do two for less than the cost of twice one?
Of doing.
Yeah, and I.
And then on the other hand, what's the likelihood that we would exercise Tiff in more than one area at a time, anyway? I, I think that's a pretty slim likelihood. I, I kinda feel like, let's focus on an area, start to finish. I don't know, how does, I, I'm.
When we prepared the board action, I know we talked about it, we talked about it with the village attorney, and we were, we were mindful of the fact that there is interest in doing multiple Tiff areas, uh, but we also recognize that there's probably going to be a lot of work that goes into the preparation of these, uh, RFPs, and we thought that, you know, we probably would get a better response if we made sure we narrowed the focus to, to one that we knew that we were gonna act on immediately. And that, um, if there's a desire in the future to do other areas and the board is satisfied with the consultant that we select, you know, that, we can move forward with that particular consultant.
Well, maybe, maybe we might be able to do it in such a way that, um, state that it's something that we are considering in the future, and that whatever you come in with at this point in time then be given due consideration in the future.
And, um, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, I, I guess one of the, uh, flexibilities that the system or our process does allow is that when we're, uh, advertising or sending out an RFP for professional services like this, you can negotiate with the, uh, the successful bidder once that bidder is selected. It does not necessarily have to be the lowest bid, but it has to be the best bid. And, uh, once we make that selection, uh, on the board's choice, uh, negotiations or the scope of work could be amended, is that correct, John?
Uh, true.
That's good.
We could very easily amend the RFP to make that kind of a statement. Um, a lot of communities don't even go through the RFP process when they, they hire these consultants, so I think we've got a lot of flexibility to put that kind of information in there.
And, um, I should've asked this question earlier. I assume these consultants are more, um, the, the planning Tiff consultants are outside of the, um, Professional Engineer Act, which has different requirements about bidding and sending out RFPs where you can't actually request price information. I assume these are not licensed engineers that may fall under the.
I, I do not believe so.
Coverage of that act, but it's, it's maybe a quick point, if you can remember, to look at, or, or, you know, who, who are we sending these to and are they licensed engineers?
That might help guide us in, uh, the list of consultants to whom we send this proposal.
These are two different geographical areas within the village that are, uh, separate school, school systems, uh, and perhaps other, uh, taxing bodies that would further complicate doing both the north and the south end of the town at the, uh, at the same time.
Would certainly widen the scope of work for both the consultant and the village.
I wanna just, uh, share at the IML, and a number of us were in the, in one of the, I don't even remember the meeting, but they were talking about the Tiffs and stuff.
Yeah.
And one of the gentlemen that spoke, the, uh, he got up there and he said he was working with a community who he believes is the, the last community in Illinois that, uh, it doesn't have any Tiffs.
And we went?
Yeah, no, we, we would be the last, we don't have one. We didn't do that, no.
No.
But we, we sat and looked at each other because he, he felt that most of the communities in these economic times or prior to that have gone to Tiff and tried to, you know, boost the, uh, you know, their businesses and things like that. And, uh, I just thought that was an interesting statement.
Kinda makes me a little leery on that, and too, then, I don't know if they're doing their homework if they don't realize who they've missed. They're obviously not very good salesmen.
But we won't send one, an RFP to them.
I think the other side of the coin is that we in many respects did not have to do that in the past because Westmont was such a desirable place for these developers to come into. They were willing to develop and spend the money without having to, uh, go through the process of, of having a Tiff, Tiff grant. So, it has, uh, both, uh, you can look at it from both sides. And now we've reached a point where we feel that it is important for us to move forward at this time, whereas previously it was not as necessary.
Correct.
Any other, uh, questions or comments? Thank you again, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Moving right along, Finance Ordinance Number Twelve.
Waive the reading?
Request to waive the reading, purchase orders. Questions? Hearing no comments, uh, we have a request for an executive session, uh, regarding personnel. So, unless there's something else to come before the board, I would entertain emotionally going to executive session.
So, move. Scott?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow?
Yes.
Trustee Blim?
Yes.
Thank you, we are now.